Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day with the Lodi and Moore's Premium, Ante Callarotta. The acronym is AMPAC, and Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 77, Class 77. What did we learn in Class 76? Well, we briefly talked about what's called Privileges and Immunities, right? The Moores need to look into and read what's called the Universal, or the United Nations Convention, on Privileges and Immunities of year 1946. And what is that document all about? It's about how Moores can project what's commonly known as your Peripery Norms of International Law. What is the Peripery Norms of International Law? It's called Just Cogits. And Just Cogits is called Human Rights. You see, all the Moores that are officers and diplomats and experts of their state have what's called Human Rights. They have the human right to be an officer of the state, to represent the state, and because of that, they have immunities. They are the messenger on behalf of their state, right? So they say, what's they all saying? Don't shoot the messenger, right? So no officers, right? No diplomats, no experts can be harmed, right? Why is that? Because that's called international law. And international law, they have a special classification called Peripery Norms of International Law, Just Cogits. And Just Cogits represents Human Rights. Now, you have the human right to have protections because you work on behalf of your state. You carry the word for your state, alright? So you're the competent authority of your state that has full powers on behalf of your state, alright? So everyone that's an officer has what's called Qualified Immunities. And all other states protect that right. That way, no state can now abridge the rights of other state officers. So it's a respected rule and regulation on planet Earth, alright? That's what we must understand as Moores. That's what we really must study and start to get a very fundamental understanding of that early on. That way, once we become officers of the state, we recognize we can just simply move forward with our courage and the understanding that we're protected under Qualified Immunities, alright? What else did we learn? We started learning a little bit more about how the Sultan and France were responsible for setting up the Charter. Where? Well, the Charter went from Tangier, Madrid, right? To where? Where did it go next? Technically, it went to the League of Nations, which was Paris, right? France. Keep in mind that Paris is the capital of France. So in 1912, the Treaty of Thèsses is enacted. In 1914, Spain relinquished jurisdiction, and Spain was where we would be depositing international laws, such as your constitutions, treaties, et cetera, right? But once Spain relinquished their jurisdiction, Spain was controlling Madrid and Tangier. Now, we no longer deposit at Madrid or Tangier. So France, at that time, took the organization, the municipal organization, to Paris in 1919 and set up the League of Nations. But then the League of Nations, after that, dissolved itself, and they established the Charter of the United Nations in 1945. France had to give a grant for it. Why? Because France was controlling the pen of the empire. They were acting as a power-internal, like a vice-sultan, to control what? All charters, all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements in the empire. They were acting on behalf of the Sultan, and the Sultan was acting on behalf of Moores, right? So those are some of the things that we learned in Class 76. As we get into Class 77, just to let the Moores know, we're still going over the Charter of the United Nations, right? That's what we're really going on into now, right? So, as you know, most times I open up to talk about the synopsis. I give you a general overview of what happened in last class. Today, we'll get into more of a dissertation to talk about the philosophy, the mentality, the ideology, and the identity of Moores. Why is this important? Because as we get into the Charter of the United Nations, you'll start recognizing it's really about Human Rights. Who protects the Human Rights of the people? The state. So the people in the state are one. So as you read the Charter, as soon as you get into the preamble, the preamble is talking about Human Rights immediately, right? Because the scourge of war affects who? People, alright? So we have to understand who are we as a people? The people continuously chant "No justice, no peace," right? But what does that mean? Have the people taken the time to look up, what does justice mean? They're chanting it, but do they truly know what it means? And the answer is, no. But we'll talk about that today. What's a part of the justice? What's the first step in justice? You must know yourself. How can you get justice if you don't know yourself? How do you make a claim to a right? How do you make a claim to justice if you don't justify who you are? Alright, so we'll talk about that today. Why is that very important? Because you cannot enforce international law if, in fact, you don't know who you are. Only the people can enforce international law. And what people are we talking about? That is the question. And the answer is, Moroccans. So we'll talk about that a little bit more today as it relates to Moores. And I know it's a sensitive conversation, it's a sensitive topic, but we have to get into this dissertation to talk about the philosophy, the ideology, the identity, right? Of the people. Because without the people understanding self, you can't enact laws for yourself. This is the reason why we find ourselves pleading to the United States of America. Because they know who they are and who they are not. And they know who you are and who you are not. But yet, they've misclassified you as being Negroes, Blacks, colored, and Americans. And then the Moores turn around and label themselves as what? Moorish Americans. And there's no such thing as Moorish Americans. We're talking about that today, right? I know it's a sensitive topic, but we have to get into it. We're getting into the preamble of the Charter, alright? So as we open up, we open up always with the Constitution, right? So the Constitution is the most important emanating document. It's what sets up your privileges and immunities, about the officers, diplomats, and experts, and who else? The nationals of your state. They have protections from any other belligerent state, or any other belligerent corporation or international organization. It's the state's obligation to protect the people through the laws, right? The state acts as an umbrella to protect the people, right? Acts as a shield to protect the borders, alright, of the state, alright? So the Constitution is very important for the Moores, okay? Let's go ahead and get into the class. So as you know, right now, we're reading over the Charter of the United Nations. This particular document I have up right now also has the International Court of Justice statutes. But if you look up the United Nations Charter, it has its own standalone document, right? This is just combined with both, okay? This is why you see that image, okay? So, in Class 76, we already read the preamble. So let's go ahead and start breaking it down, shall we? Says, "I told the Moores, everything we do is about reading the title." So we broke down the title, right? Took us a whole class, two classes, break down the word Charter and Nation. So now, we're finally getting into the preamble, we'll start breaking down the preamble, right? It's very important, more than what we're talking about today. So in the preamble, okay? So as a recap, we'll go ahead, go ahead and have Mother read the preamble one more time. We'll come back and recap, okay? Mother?
We, the peoples of the United Nations, determined to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war, which twice in our lifetime has brought untold sorrow to mankind, and to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of a human person, in the equal rights of men and women, and of nations large and small, and to establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties and other sources of international law can be maintained, and to promote social progress and better standards of life and larger freedom. And for these ends, to practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors, and to unite our strength to maintain international peace and security, and to ensure by the acceptance of principles and the institution of methods that armed force shall not be used, save in the common interest, and to employ international machinery for the promotion of the economic and social advancement of all peoples. Have resolved to combine our efforts to accomplish these aims. Accordingly, our respective governments, through representatives assembled in the city of San Francisco, who have exhibited their full powers found to be in good and due form, have agreed to the present Charter of the United Nations, and do hereby establish an international organization to be known as the United Nations.
Alright, thank you, Mother. Okay, so let's go ahead and start breaking down the preamble. You see, the preamble is like a synopsis. It's going to give you a general overview. It's going to give you specific instructions. It's going to tell you provisions, the provisos, the conditions, right? It's letting you know the next thing you're going to read is about how to now enforce the philosophy of the preamble, okay? Alright, so as we're getting started, first thing we see is what? We, the peoples. So the Charter is about peoples, more so than states. Because you can't have a state unless the people enact a constitution. And then the people take their sovereignty and do what? They place it into the Constitution, because the Constitution becomes a contract to govern all the affairs of men and women. It creates equality for all, alright? So it's a contract between the people of that state, okay? So we, the peoples of the United Nations, determined to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war, which twice in our lifetime has brought untold sorrow to mankind, and to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of a human person, in the equal rights of men and women, and of nations large and small, and to establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties and other sources of international law can be maintained and to promote social progress and better standards of life and larger freedoms. Let's pause right there, right? That's in a whole mouthful right there, right in the preamble. But most people just pronounce these words and keep right on going. We have a bad habit of pronouncing words, but we don't read words. What does read mean? To comprehend, discernment, right? Forensics, analysis, right? We have to pour over, we have to devour, right? Peruse, et cetera, right? So let's go ahead and break this down. What are we learning right off the top? It's about peoples, right? It's about what? Human rights. It's about human persons. It's about rights of who? Men and women. And then it says "and" of nations. But we learned the word nation means what? State, right? So it's the people of the states. But the people have human rights. And what gives the people the human rights? States, right? That's what gives you your rights, states. See, it's not about what you say out of your mouth. Because documentation beats conversation every day of the week. So this is documentation to tell you, how do you get your rights? How do you get Human Rights? It's giving you the instructions right off the top. There's the proviso, provisions, the conditions for who? For men and women who are seeking Human Rights, right? For the human person, right? Let's continue. Now, listen. So what does the instruction say? People, we, the people, have to establish conditions, right? In order to what? Get justice and peace, right? But in order for you now to establish conditions to get justice and peace, you gotta understand your obligations. And what are your obligations? Your obligations come from what? Treaties and other sources of international law. And those sources of international law, which is also treaties and constitutions, because constitutions is international law, does what? It promotes social progress. Progress. What's progress? That's motion forward. That's forward motion, right? So if you're not getting justice and peace, that means things are stagnant. That means you gotta go back and read what? The conditions. What is conditions? Provisions. What is conditions? Instructions, right? Understand how do you get your justice and peace? It's through the obligation of treaties and other sources of international law, such as constitutions, resolutions, conventions, right? So now, you can maintain what? You're promote the social progress, move forward, to set up what? Standards of life. And once you set that up, now you have freedom. You see how freedom is last? They're giving you instructions that you gotta go back. It's your obligation as people to understand the instructions. Because the conditions set up your social progress in order for you to establish standards of life, in order for you to have your freedom. Freedom is last. You only get freedoms when you understand the instructions, the obligations, the conditions. And in the instructions, it don't say nowhere to march and pray. Nowhere. What is the instructions? It's about your pen, okay? So let's go ahead and dive into this. Why is it important that we're taking the time to look at this? Before we really get deep into the Charter of the United Nations, before we even get to Article 1, we have to understand the fundamentals of what this particular agreement is about. It's about Human Rights. What humans? Now, you have to name the parties. Who are the parties? Well, specifically speaking, we're talking about who? Moores. What kind of Moores? That's the question. Moroccans within this jurisdiction, this jurisdiction of the empire. But if Moores keep calling themselves Moorish Americans, that means you don't understand how to get your Human Rights. Because there's no such thing as Moorish Americans. I'll prove that today. Now, I know it's a sensitive topic, but I can't stop right here and read the preamble and jump right into Article 1 till we understand this is about Human Rights. But what's the name of your people? What is your nationality? Because the state tells you what your nationality is. You set up a state that said, "We're Moorish Americans, we're Americans." Guess what? It's going to get rejected. Why is it going to get rejected? Because the Americans are who? The ex-patriots of Europe. Through a contract called treaties and constitutions, that the Sultan of Morocco, not the Sultan of America, the Sultan of Morocco allowed a group of 13 colonies to call themselves what? Americans. You're not the American. We'll prove that today. The ex-patriots of Europe are the Americans. Okay, let's go ahead and dive on in, alright? Let's get into this. Let's break this preamble down, alright? Conditions. Why are we looking up conditions? Oh, okay, let's go back to it. Let's go back to it. Okay, it says you gotta establish conditions. You should stop right there. What condition? You should ask yourself, what conditions? What is conditions? Okay, let's go ahead. Mother?
Condition: A future and uncertain event upon the happening of which is made to depend the existence of an obligation, or that which subordinates the existence of liability under a contract to a certain future event.
Okay, thank you, Mother. So the conditions is about a contract. And it's, you're dependent, you're dependent to understand the terms and conditions of the contract, right? What's the other word that tells you what? You got obligations to understand what? The contract. You gotta understand the conditions on how to set up the future, right? To understand the contract. It's all about the existence and liabilities under a contract. And Moores haven't been reading the contract. The contract tells you what your nationality is. We're talking about that today. So we're talking conditions, right? We're talking what? There's the word right here. Obligations, right? Conditions, obligations. Let's go back to the Charter. So the Charter talked about what? Let's increase this a little bit. To establish what? To establish conditions. It was establish conditions, right? To do what? Set up what? Obligations. And once you understand the conditions and obligations, now you can start understanding that conditions, obligations, by enforcing treaties and other sources of international law, which sets up the promotion of social progress to move forward. And once you move forward, now you're finally on a yellow brick road to establish your standards of life, and eventually, you'll have your freedom once you check all the boxes. But first box you gotta check is what? What's the first box you gotta check? The Human Rights box. Okay, and Human Rights is about who? What type of men and women are we? What's our nationality? Your state should say you're who? Moroccans. If you establish a state that says you're Americans, that's an oxymoron. That makes you a hypocrite. That will make your so-called constitution void ab initio. What does void ab initio mean? Void from the beginning, because you're not Americans. We'll prove that today. Okay, next word. Proviso. What are the provisions? Okay, what are we learning about the word proviso? It was about what? Conditions, right? We're going backwards, and then we're going to pull it forward. We're talking about what? Provisions. Provisions, condition, condition or provisions, same word, right? Synonym, right? It's about what? Mother?
Proviso: A condition or provision which is inserted in a deed, lease, mortgage, or contract, and on the performance of non-performance, or non-performance of which the validity of the instrument frequently depends. It usually begins with the word provided.
Thank you, Mother. Okay, so proviso, provisions, conditions. Proviso sets up the conditions, right? So conditions, proviso, synonyms, why? It's about what? It's about the conditions, the instructions, right? To, is what? The instructions are what? Inserted in where? A contract, right? And it does what? It sets up the performance, specific performance, or non-performance, right? It sets up the validity of that instrument. So what's the instrument? The contract, right? The proper written instrument, the instrument, the proper written instrument is the contract, right? So everything you do based upon performance or non-performance depends on the contract. And the only way you're going to get your freedom is provided, provided, provided on your performance of the contract. Because you gotta follow what? The instruction, proviso, condition, provision is about instructions. Okay, listen. Provisions, going up, fourth edition, Blackwell Dictionary, fourth edition. Provision. Mother?
Foresight of the chance of an event happening, sufficient to indicate that any present undertaking upon which its assumed realization might exert a natural and proper influence was entered upon in full contemplation of it as a future possibility.
Thank you, Mother. Okay, so provision. Wait a minute. Provision, provision, foresight. So your provisions, pro is what? A prefix, right? What does pro mean? Forward. Pro means forward. Okay, listen. So pro and vision, right? Fore sight, foresight. What's foresight?
Like future.
Future, right? You're looking ahead, right? That's the mission and the vision, right? So your forehead, your forehead has a third eye called your foresight, to see the future, right? You got your two eyes to be nearsighted, your third eye sits in your forehead, third eye sits in your forehead, and you're supposed to always be maintaining foresight, right? And your foresight now tells you, like the GPS system is telling your destination, right? It sets, and now it sets up what? So your foresight sets up the realization, realization, right? What becomes realization? What becomes realization? Once you have the full contemplation, the full contemplation of understanding the provisions of the instructions. See this word right here? Full contemplation? What does full contemplation mean? Understanding the contract. Understanding what the contract expects based upon performance and non-performance, right? Look at this word, full contemplation. Do you remember when we read over in 1906? Ex-patriations, protections abroad, document with Mr. Hoffman Philip, who was speaking to Mr. Root in 1906? And remember what Mr. Philip said? He said, "The Moores have not done what?" Contemplated fully, right? He said, "When the Moores seriously contemplate, seriously contemplate about what?" The Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1. Mr. Philip was talking about the Moores have to contemplate seriously, as well as the Americans have to contemplate seriously if the Moores come back into the full, full understanding of the laws of the empire. So the Moores have to do what? Choose between the entire submission of the laws of the empire. The entire means what? Full. So the Moores have to understand the instructions fully, not halfway. There ain't no such thing as halfway crook, right? There ain't no such thing as halfway nationhood. Ain't no such thing as halfway statehood. You gotta understand, it must be full or nothing at all when you're talking about law. And it must be full when you're talking about nationality. Naturalization. The Moores got naturalized, right? Isn't that what the Treaty of Madrid, Article 15, Paragraph 1 says? It says, "The Moores did what?" It says, "Any subject of Morocco that's what? Been naturalized in a foreign country must choose between the entire laws of the empire." Moores got naturalized. So when the Moores got naturalized, what is naturalization? It is the act of adopting a foreigner and closing him with the privilege of native citizen. So what happened? The United States of America, through that Naturalization Act of 1870, through their Fourteenth Amendment of 1868, et cetera. What'd they do? They adopted us through their legislation. They used a pen, and they adopted us as foreigners, right? And they clothed us with what? Called us what? Negroes, Blacks, coloreds, and Americans. That's how they naturalized us. What does naturalize mean? What's another way to pronounce naturalize? Neutralize. You see, neutralize, right? We're using what? Discernment. We're perusing, we're looking through the words, we're using crossword puzzle, right? Forensics. Naturalization means to neutralize who? The Moores. As what? An identity. What were type of Moores? Moroccan Moores. We're going to talk about that today, right? I'm building you up. To talk about who? Moroccans, okay? The Moores say they want justice. Okay, Mother, what's the definition of justice verb?
In old English practice, to do justice, to see justice done, to summon one to do justice.
Okay.
Now, in the common law, the title given in England to the judges of the king's bench and the common pleas, and in America, to the judges of the Supreme Court of the United States and of the appellate courts of many of the states.
Okay, so what did we just read? What did we just comprehend about justice? Moores say, "No justice, no peace." But what do we know about the definition of justice as it relates to law? Listen. Justice verb, in old English practice, to do justice, to see justice done, to summon one to do justice. But who's the only competent authority that can summon someone? Courts and the legislative branch of a state is the only people that can summon you. It's courts and the legislative branch of what? A state. Listen. So the justice now person plays her theme in common law. So justice is about laws, and this is what Moores want. They want laws to protect them, right? Listen, it is the title given in England to judges. So justice is about who? Judges of the king's bench and the common pleas, and in America, to the judges of the Supreme Court of the United States and of the appellate courts of many of the states. So don't worry about the semantics of names. Look at, look at it deeper. What are they saying? The Moores say, "No justice, no peace." Oh, you want justice? Who can give you justice? Laws. What else? Judges, alright? Because the judges are overseeing what? Laws through what? Their court, right? But the law and the judges that are in the court were established by what? States, states. So if the Moores want justice, then where's your state? Where's your own judges that look like you? That are what? Moroccans. You need Moroccan judges in order for you to get your justice and your peace. You gotta see what you're saying when you say, "No justice, no peace." Okay, why are we looking up justice? Okay, let's go back to it. Because the word justice is in the Charter of the United Nations. You want justice? You want peace, which is respect? Okay, you need to know the definition of justice. And justice is about what? Justice is about laws. Okay, where's your laws, Moors? You know what laws you keep trying to enforce? Their laws, their statutes, their constitution, which is their laws, their judges, their courts. Where's your laws? Where's your judges? Where's your courts? That way you can do what? Summon them with your justice. But where's it all start? Where's your state? That's what we're missing. Everything is about state. But the state is for who? The people, the people and the state are what? What type of people is the question? Cause there's no such thing as a black state, there's no such thing as a negro state, there's no such thing as a colored state, there's no such thing as a Martian American state, there's no such thing as a Pan African state, there's no such thing as an Indian state. There's tribes, there's organizations, there's charters for people, but they're not states. Okay, let's go a little deep. Wait one.
Under the definition of Moors, it says something about we summon the judges or somebody to the courts.
Yes. Under definition of Moors.
Right.
But did it say which type of Moors? No, it did not. It's a generic word, how to define in the Black Law Dictionary, the definition of Moors. It says under the Isle of Man. Do you know what the Isle of Man is?
It's right off the coast of Great Britain.
Great Britain, so they were talking about who? British Moors. British Moors are who? Immigrants with an E in Morocco. So, they're talking about those Moors, not Moroccan Moors. That's the purpose of why we're going over this class today. We have to identify the party. Who, what's the nationality we're talking about? British Moors or Moroccan Moors? Because when you establish your state constitution, what nationality you gonna put in the constitution representing what type of people? Are they British Moors? Are they Portuguese Moors? Spaniard Moors, right? Or are they Moroccan Moors? Cause there's no such thing as Martian Americans, because America as a name is already trademarked by the expatriates of who? Great Britain, Europe. You can't use that name. It doesn't belong you. It's in a contract already and a constitutional treaty that says it identifies the party. Americans on that side of the table, Moroccans on this side of the table. You can't claim to be the American and the Moroccan. Listen. What are we missing? We're missing wisdom. Mother?
King James, James Virgin, Proverbs four, seven. Wisdom is the principal thing, therefore seek wisdom, and with all thy getting, get understanding.
What does that mean? Proverbs, chapter four, verse seven. Wisdom is the principal thing, therefore seek wisdom, and with all thy getting, get an understanding. What is wisdom? It's a compound word for what? Wise dome. Wise dome starts with you. You, you are the principal thing. Starts with you, self. First thing you gotta do is get an understanding of who you are. You are the principle. What's the principle of you? What's the peak of you? Your head, your mentality, the psychology, the ide- ideology, the identity of you. And if you don't know who you are as a people, how can you enact laws and a constitution identify who you are? Listen, wisdom is the principal thing. So, wisdom, compound word, wise dome, but what else does it mean? Wise what? Dominion, dome, dome, dominion. You got a wise dominion, what makes your dominion wise? It's putting into what? Proper written instrument. That's what makes it wise, that you put your latitude, longitude into your constitution to identify your state, and then you identify who the people are. Listen. So, wisdom is the principal thing, therefore seek wisdom. What is seek? Seek, S-E-E, see, wisdom. Where's your third eye? That's in your forehead, third eye to see the wisdom of who you are as the principle, and where you're standing. What's your understanding? You gotta be standing, right? Something's under you. What's under you? What are you standing on, Moors? What principles? First principle is knowing who you are. What's the second principle? The land you stand on. What's the name of the land? It's Morocco. Okay, then what's the name of the people? Moroccan. The land is named after the people, and the people named after the land. Listen, take it from the top. Wisdom is the principal thing, therefore seek wisdom, and with all thy getting, get an understanding, understanding of what? The principle of who you are. Cause you can't do nothing till you know who you are. That's the first step in everything in life. That's the wisdom of you. Listen. You see this word, proverbs? Proverbs, compound word, pro verbs. Pro verbs. Verbs. Pro verbs. So, pro, prefix, pro means what? Forward. Right? Forward what? Action. Verb is action, right? Listen. Proverbs, proverb, verb, verb, huh? Eight parts of speech. You see it? Proverbs is proverb. Eight parts of speech. What's the eight parts of speech? We all learned this in third grade, right? Eight parts of speech, but we don't know it no more. Why? Cause we can't read, but watch this. Noun, pronoun, verb, adverb, adjective, preposition, interjection, and conjunction, eight parts of speech. But guess what? Memorizing that don't mean nothing if you don't know what to do with the eight parts of speech. What do you do with the eight parts of speech? You create sentences. Sentences create paragraphs, and paragraphs turn into contracts. What's the first contract we needed? Ourself. Who are you? What's the second contract? Constitution that outlines to say to the world who you are. That's what eight parts of speech is for. So, you learn how to write contracts and enforce contracts. What's the use of us learning eight parts of speech if we don't turn around and enact the constitution to represent us as a people? Listen, I'm gonna break this down for you. You're in an etymology class today. Mother?
The prefix pro primarily means forward, but can also mean for. Some words that the prefix pro gave rise to are promise, our, yeah, promise, promise, pro and promote. When you, for instance, make progress, you are stepping forward, whereas if you give the pros in an argument, you are speaking for something by stating its advantages.
Alright, thank you, mother. What do we have here? Okay, the prefix pro and proverbs, proverb, eight parts of speech. Okay, the prefix pro primarily means forward, but can also mean for, right? Can also mean for. There's some, some words that the prefix pro gave rise to rock, promise, pro, and promote, right? When you, for instance, make progress, right? Forward motion, cause we got no difference between motion, right? Motion and progress are two different things. You can walk on a treadmill, have motion, but do you have progress? You have forward progress. Proverbs is about forward progress, to understand the four, forehead and the four sights, third eye, to see the sight, where you're going. Listen. It's about what? Stepping forward. Stepping forward, understanding, stepping, standing, stepping, stepping forward. Whereas if you give the pros, like pros and cons, pros in an argument, you are speaking for something by stating its advantages, right? So, what we need to do is, Moors, listen, and then keep it germane, what's this about? Proverbs, proverb, proverb, eight parts of speech. Listen. So, the pro and proverb or proverbs means going forward, but also means for, right? So, you need what? You need progress, forward progress, but wait, watch this. It says pro primarily means forward, but can also mean for, for what? See this right here? Compound word, for. Compound word, for. Compound word, for. For wards. What's a ward? Ward of the state. What makes your ward of state be naturalized by a foreign country? So, you need forward progress, for wards. What do you need for wards? You need an understanding of self. For ward, forward. That way you could no longer be a ward of the state. Okay, listen. It's gonna go some, it's gonna go over some of y'all heads. Listen. Verb, mother?
To use a word that use, a word that is not conventionally used as a verb, typically a noun as a verb. Oh. Verb noun, one, a word used to describe an action, state, or occurrence, and forming the main part of the predicate of a sentence such as here, become, happen. Verb, use as a verb, a word that is not conventionally used as a verb, typically a noun as a verb. I put it at the beginning.
Excellent, alright, so here we go, mother, thank you very much. So, verb, what's the definition of verb? Noun, number one, under noun is a word. So, verb can also be a noun. Person place her thing, but listen. A word used to describe an action, right? So, it's an action. State or occurrence and forming the main part of the predicate of a sentence such as here, become, happen, right? So, verb, to, use, a word that is not conven- conveniently
Conventional.
Conventionally used as a verb, typically a noun as a verb. So, use as verb, right? So, verb is action. So, what's happening? Noun and verb, what's the noun? Person place her thing, right? What's that? State, a state is a person, place, or thing, but you need the verb of the action in order to establish the constitution on behalf of the people. That's the action. That's the forward action. Listen. Listen. Proverbs, right? Proverbs. Pro means forward. Verb, action. Forward, action. See, for what? For third eye sight. You need progress. Watch this. You see the four, seven, chapter four, verse seven? What does that mean? There's four sevens that you have to do in order to make a circle. You need four circle sevens. Listen. Listen, for the Moors out there, the Moors, this is Moors science. Listen. Proverbs is four sevens, i.e. four circle sevens as follows. Listen, what's the first seven you need? You gotta know by self. Know that you are a Moroccan woman or man. That's the first seven. Out of the four, one, two, three, four sevens equals a hundred percent. Watch this, we're gonna get to it. Be patient with me. The first seven is, you gotta know yourself. Know that you are Moroccan as a woman and a man. What's the second seven? Constitution. Once you know that you're Moroccan, a woman and man, now you have an obligation to enact what? A constitution that gives you your justice, right? That sets up what? Sovereignty and independence, which is what? Nation and statehood, right? What's the third seven? Intergent domains, which is state laws, treaties, and international law. What's the third, fourth seven? Fourth seven is what? Economic liberty without any inequality, which sets up your freedom. In order for you to have freedom ultimately, you gotta know by self. So, what's happening? Here's your triple principle right here. One, two, three, your triple principle of the preamble of the Act of Al-Dosar. But in order for you to enact the triple principle, first you gotta know who you are. And you can't enact the triple principle if you're saying you're a Martian American, because the triple principle is only for who? Moroccans. Okay, now watch this. Why do I say it's four sevens? Because it's Proverbs, chapter four, verse seven, so it's four sevens. What's the seven all about, right? So, it's four, one, two, three, four, which represents what? Four seasons. Four seasons is a circle, okay? Four, one, two, three, four, and a seven, right? So, what makes a quarter? A quarter is what? Twenty-five cents, right? You say twenty-five cents. Quarter for whom, right? Five plus two is what? Seven, okay? So, here's your first seven. That's your first quarter. One, two quarters, three quarters, four quarters make what? A hundred percent. What's a hundred percent? Full, entire, what? You have to choose between the entire laws of the empire, not what the treaty says, Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, says what? You have to choose between the entire laws of the empire. What's ti- entire? Hundred percent? Full. Are you, are you catching these words I'm saying? Listen. So, when you understand this concept, everything starts with self. You want justice and peace, first you gotta know who you are. You're not black. You're not negro, you're not colored, you're not African American, you're not, you're not Martian American, you're not Pan African, you're not Indian. Who are you? Moroccan. How do we know you're Moroccan? It's in the treaties. We'll prove that today. But once you know yourself, then, then and only then, can you institute constitutions that set up the intergent domains, and then you get to economic liberty without any inequality. Freedom is about what? Equality. But this, you have to bring it full circle, you gotta go through these steps, Moors. These are all steps to bring it a hundred percent, cause after you choose between the entire laws of the empire, guess what you got coming? You got coming what? A constitution and intergent domains. Who maintains intergent domains? Judges, laws, right? Which is state laws, treaties, and international law. And after that, economic liberty without any equality. See, your money, economics, you control the what? Ecosystem of the state. You control the money, you control the finance, you have the power and the money. And once you have that, you got freedom because you control the police, you control the judges, you control the money. You gotta see what's happening here. Okay, let's go back up. This is Moors science for those who don't truly understand what's happening right now. Proverbs, proverb, forward, action, progress, for, motion. So, wisdom is the principal thing, therefore seek wisdom, and with all thy getting, get an understanding of who you are. And once you know who you are, then you can start to check boxes. Cause you know yourself. That's the principle, you. Then the state, the constitution, the state protects its people that know themselves. Let's continue. What did Noah Jauali say about our identity? This is Noah Jauali. Okay, listen. We are descendants of Moroccans and born in America. Noah Jauali. But you see what's happening? Noah Jauali told us, "We are descendants of Moroccans, however, we've been born in America." What do you mean born in America? We were naturalized. What else did he say about Moors? He said, "We are hard-headed, stiff-necked, mean set of people that have never done anything except at the point of a sword." Noah Jauali, our prophet. You know what we do at the point of a sword? What is the United States doing? Enacting legislation with their pen. The pen is mighty than the sword, that's the new sword now. They're enacting legislation all because we don't know ourselves. Not knowing that our treaty gave us the power to enact our own legislation. Let's continue. What's this all about? Okay, let's, as a reminder, let's go back. The Charter of the United Nations, right? The Charter of the United Nations, right? Going about the Charter of the United Nations, about we the people, you gotta understand who we are as a people first. Before you can get to article one, you must understand the preamble gave you a set of instructions. First you gotta know who we are as people. And once you know who you are as people, then it sets up your human rights. Cause now you're seeking human rights, right, as what? As human persons for who? Men and women, right? And now you're seeking what? Okay, I want some human rights, what do I need to do? Oh, okay, you gotta establish some conditions. Right, and when you establish the conditions, it starts to set up the justice and peace. Cause you're following the obligations of treaties and other sources of international, international law such as constitutions. That now promote social progress, forward motion, progress. That sets up standards of life that gives you your freedom. Listen. Freedom. Mother.
The state of being free, liberty, self-determination, absence of restraint, the opposite of slavery. The power of acting in the character of a moral personality. According to the dictates of the will, without other check, hindrance, or prohibition. Than such as may be imposed by just and necessary laws and the duties of social life. The prevalence in the government and constitution of a country of such a system of laws and institutions. As secure li- civil liberty to the individual citizen.
Alright, thank you, mother. What did we just learn about freedom? No justice, no peace, the people want what? Freedom, from what? Inequalities, right, okay, what do we know about freedom? Listen, freedom, the state. Of being free, what makes you free? State, what type of state? State of mind, the philosophy, the dissertation, the philosophy, the ideology. Of identity of self, it starts with self, everything starts with self, listen, freedom. Free dumb, compound word, freedom, free your mind. How do you free your mind? First thing you need some dominion. Your dominion is what? Your state, a mind and your state, so you go from the abstract to the manifest. Of a constitution that outlines your latitude, longitude, that's protected by what? Your judges. That way you can get your equality of your people, of Moroccans, listen. Freedom, compound word, free dominion, freedom, wisdom. Proverbs, chapter four, verse seven, right? Wisdom, wisdom, freedom, wisdom is the principal theme. So seek wisdom, freedom. And in all thy getting, get an understanding, and what understanding do you need to have? You need a state in order to be free, so you can have liberty, so you can have self-determination, and the absence of restraint. Right, which is the opposite of slavery. Listen, the power, you want power, Moors? You want power, listen, the power, acting in the character of a moral personality. What did we learn about moral personality? Did you remember when we looked up the definition of nation? And it says, says but thou that she becomes a moral person. She, look up the definition of nation, it says she becomes a moral person. Who's a she? Constitution, constitution is what? Female in character, matrician character, earth is she, the constitution is she. Listen. So from the top, the power comes from what? The moral personality of the constitution. According to the dictates of the will, what's the will? You'll find out in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Article twenty-two talks about the will for the person, right, for the parties, the will is what? Constitution. So the will of the people is the constitution, without other check, hindrance, or prohibition. Than such as may be imposed by just and necessary laws. Moors need what? Just, right, just and necessary laws. Where are our laws? We keep saying enforce the constitution, United States of America, we keep saying enforce their statutes. Why do we keep saying that? Because we don't have our own laws, laws for who? Moroccans. Listen. And duties of social life, okay, what does it say down here? It's the prevalence, what's prevalence? To prevail. How do you prevail? Okay, in the government and constitution of your what? Country, your state, how do you wanna prevail? You want justice and peace, how do you prevail? You need a government, you need a constitution for your state. Of such system of laws and institutions that secure civil liberty to the individual citizen, i.e. national. So you want freedom? Okay, then where's your state? But in order to have a state, you gotta know who you are, listen. Who are we as a people? That's the first box, we gotta check, who are we? The answer can be found in the treaties. This is the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, what's the title saying? Right of Protections Pro. Forward, right, forward motion, proverbs, right, proverbs. We need forward action, right, a forward action needs rights, you want your rights? Then you need some forward motion, you need some progress to put together your constitution and state, where? In Morocco, not in America. Okay, what, what, what did the, what did the colonists call you? What did they say about you? They said what? You're a Moroccan national, their nationality is Moroccan, that's what the colonists said about you. This is their cliff notes, this is their footnote, they say Moors are what? Moroccans, but Moors keep saying they're Americans. Even the colonists know that you're a Moroccan, because you're in Morocco. The people are named after the land, the land is named after the people, so is the land America? No, Moors keep saying the land is not America, they keep saying it's Morocco, then they turn around and call themselves Americans. That don't make no sense. Listen. What's happening? Okay. Now you go down to article fifteen, right? Article fifteen, make this fast.
Of the Charter?
Of the, uh, Treaty of Madrid, article fifteen, thank you, mother. Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, article fifteen, right? It's about what? Right of Protections in Morocco, right? Pro, pro, prefix, right, means forward, or for, you need protections, you need what? Forward motion, for protections in Morocco. Listen, it's about who? Subjects of Morocco, not subjects of America. It's subjects of Morocco, right? But what did the colonists say about it? Okay, right underneath article fifteen, right, and sixteen, go right into what they call the footnote. What did, what did the United States of America say about it? They talked about what? They was talking to what? The Moroccan Ministry of Foreign Affairs, right, so they're talking to Morocco, right, in the footnote, for who? Moroccans. On behalf of who? Moroccans, right, listen, what else did they say? They're talking about what? They're talking what? To the Moroccan government, not American government. They're telling you, the Moroccan government about what? Moroccan nationality. It's in the treaty, this is the footnote, cause the United States is talking about who? Moroccans. Not Americans that have been what? Naturalized, Americans haven't been naturalized that are Moors. The Moors been naturalized. This is what they say. Right here in the footnote, right? It's about rights where? Where's the rights? Moors want rights, okay, your rights, your certain rights are where? In Morocco. Not in America, you see how they're talking? Your certain rights are in Morocco. Not in America, so America, the United States of America is talking about who? Certain rights in Morocco, right? And it's about who? The Moroccan government. They keep talking about the Moroccan government, not the American government for Moors. This is treaty, they're talking about you, Moors. But we turned around and made these self-imposed allegations. And these titles against ourselves saying we're Americans. We're talking about that in just a moment. Listen. So that's Treaty of Madrid, talking about article fifteen, subjects of Morocco. So the land is named after the people, and the people are named after the land. So if we in Morocco, then what would the nationality be? Moroccan, isn't that common sense? Listen. This is the Act Algeciras, now you really gotta pay attention now. Listen. Act Algeciras. First thing we do is, we get into the preamble, right? The preamble of the Act Algeciras is talking about what? Prosperity in Morocco, not prosperity in America. But listen, do you see this over here? See this word, Maroc? What language is that? French, okay, remember now, this document is written in French on the left. And English on the right. So when you see this word, Maroc, pay attention. When you see this word, Maroc? Maroc, right, is in cross-reference to Morocco, so France calls Morocco, Maroc, you see that? So French language, English, okay, watch this. What do we have here? This is article two of the Act Algeciras, right? You see it, article two, article two, look what, look what France, how France raised the word. Moorish in English, look how France wrote it. Moroccans. So wait a minute, so in English, Moorish, and French, Moroccans. See, France is telling the truth. We are Moorish, don't get me wrong, but what is the specific nationality? Cause there's Moors all over planet Earth. Based upon your geographic location within empire, what type of Moor are you? What kind of Moorish are you? You're what type of Moor? Moroccan Moor, this is France telling. This is in a treaty. Documentation beats conversation every day of the week, listen. It's mentioned forty-two times, forty-two times. Okay, let's go down, click, Moroccan, right, you see it, Moroccan. See how, how the cursor is finding it? Moroccan, right, the French language. Look, Moroccan, see it says Moroccan right there in French? Okay, what, what article was that? Okay, let's go back up, article four, right? Now I'm not gonna keep showing every article, but what I will show you is this. You see where it says Moroccan in French, but look, look over to the right, talking about what? Moorish. Let's go, let's keep going, because documentation beats conversation every day of the week. Moroccan, Moroccan, French Moroccan, English Moorish, Moorish Moroccan, so who are the Moors? Moroccans. It's a treaty. So what am I going to do? I'm gonna click on this forty-two times, right? Not gonna waste your time. Go down. Right, article eighteen talks about what? Moroccans, right, you see Moorish on the right, Moroccan on the left, you see? More rocket? I can go through this entire document. Now let me show you a special article here, article ninety-six. Okay, article ninety-six is the only article in the entire Act Algeciras of one hundred and twenty-three articles. Article ninety-six says the word more as a standalone word, it doesn't say Moorish, right? Cause over here we see what? Moorish, right, we keep seeing Moorish. But article ninety-six, that we go down to it, is the only article that uses the word Moor, a standalone word, M-O-O-R, okay? Okay, so now we're in article ninety-six. Okay, article ninety-six, going to article ninety-six. So you see Moorish, right? Moorish, but look, we keep coming down. Keep coming down, says Moroccan loan, right? Keep going down, Morocco, and right here it says. Okay, it says Moors, see Moors? Let's look at the equivalent of what France said, who are the Moors? The Moors are what? Moroccans. It's a treaty. Documentation beats conversation every day of the week. What type of documentation? A treaty, and treaty is supreme law of the land. So what's been happening? The Moors have been given what? Miseducation. We've been given indoctrination. I e. Fraud has taken place, fraud whether it's what? Knowingly or unknowingly. Someone's been teaching us fraud. We're not Moorish Americans. We're not Americans whatsoever, we are Moroccans. Now let me ask you a question, since we already see this in the treaty, right? This is the Act Algeciras, Act Algeciras, let's go to the top, Act Algeciras is about. Moors, right, we've already proven that, what type of Moors? Moroccans, right? I know it's moving too fast, I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, it's about what? Moroccans, right? It's about Moroccans, but let's, let's analyze something really quickly, right, for the record. For the record. This is about the Act Algeciras of nineteen oh six, right? But then we also talked about what? The Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, right? Why is it that our Moorish teachers don't teach us about the Treaty of Madrid? Why is our Moorish teachers don't teach us about the Act Algeciras? Our Moorish teachers been teaching for over a hundred years, they don't teach us about the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty? They have been teaching us about the Act Algeciras of nineteen oh six, why is that? You know why? Because the Treaty of Madrid talks about what? Moroccans. Cause the Act Algeciras outlines the word Moroccan. And see, our teachers that we all been learning from for decades, kept telling us we were Moorish Americans. So therefore, if they now show you a treaty that says your Moroccan nationality. Is substantively Moroccan. And that would do what? That would undermine the fact they've been calling us Moorish Americans. They would have to turn around and course correct to tell you, yeah, we're not Americans, we're really Moroccans. But yet, they don't wanna course correct. Which means they're doing what? They're maintaining what's called color of law, color of authority, and color of title by calling us Moorish Americans. And we're not Americans, we're what? Moroccans. When in doubt, pull out the treaty. And the treaty beats conversation every day of the week. So there's been some fraud going on, we gotta talk about this, why are we talking about this? Here's why. Because as we start to get into the Charter of the United Nations. We have to first identify who are the people. And the people still think they're Moorish Americans, we'll never, ever, ever get justice. Because we keep going under a non-begir. We keep giving ourselves a misnomer. Moorish American is what? Counterfeit. It's fake. It does not exist nowhere on planet Earth in any treaty on planet Earth. Moorish American is not in any constitution that's been ratified and passed and promulgated on planet Earth. No such things, Moorish Americans. But there is such thing as Moroccans. So if you wanna get your justice and your peace, first you gotta know by itself. Then enact the constitution that identifies the people, and the people are Moroccans, they're not Americans. And Moors will never be Americans. Never have been, never will be, so who are ancient mothers and fathers? Are they Moorish Americans or are they Moroccans? They're Moroccans. But our Moorish teachers don't wanna course correct. And it's creating what? Punitive damages for Moors. Moors are out here sending rich Sinapadavis claiming to be someone that they are not. That's number one, number two, what else are we doing? We're not enacting and following the instructions, the obligations, right? What are the obligations? What is the establishment, we gotta establish what? The conditions and the obligations of enforcing what? The contracts of treaties and other sources of international law. That sets up and promotes the social progress. Which sets up the standards of life in order for us to. Which sets up the standards of life in order for us to finally get freedom. What are the five points of light? Love, truth, peace, freedom and justice. What's the justice? The judges. Now, representing all of your Moroccan laws. For the people that are Moroccans. Why is this important to understand? Here at the AIPAC study session. Our obligation is to do what? Study, study, study. And in studying, we have to tell the truth. In order to save the people. How do you save fallen humanity? With the truth. The truth will set you free. You'll never get freedom by having what's called knowingly or unknowingly lies that set up fraud. I love all the Moors, whether they're competent or incompetent, because we're all in this together. We have to come together as a people in order for us to enact laws for what type of people? Moroccans. Where did all this come from as I, as I start to reference? Here's what happened, Moors. Mother.
Where did Moors get the concept that Moors are Americans? Answer, Noah Webster's dictionary, year eighteen twenty-eight as follows. American, adjective pertaining to America. American noun, a native of America. Originally applied to the Aboriginals or copper-colored races, found here by the Europeans. But now applied to the descendants of Europeans born in America.
What happened? This is Noah Webster's dictionary, year eighteen twenty-eight. The Moors all went to this dictionary. And this is the holy grail that all the Moors keep saying why we're Americans, because of a dictionary, not a law dictionary. Not a treaty. Not a convention. But a dictionary that says what? American noun, a native of America. Originally applied to the Aboriginals. So the word American, right? Was applied, applied to the Aboriginals. What's applied mean? Naturalized. It was applied what? Color. Color of law, color of title, color of authority. Right? It's counterfeit, it's fake. It was never our identity. It was applied to us, that does not make it who you are. And it certainly does not make it substantive law, because it's in Noah Webster's dictionary. And the Moors all know that this is where they're getting this definition of why we're Americans, because we're not Americans. It's a misnomer. It's misprisoned. Again, American, a native of America. Originally applied to the Aboriginals or copper-colored races. Found here by the Europeans. So who was found here? That's the question. Was Americans or was it Moroccans? Moroccans was found here. By who? Europeans, who now call themselves Americans, because they used to be what? British, Portuguese, Spaniard, Polish, Irish, Danish, Russian, German, Italian, Scandinavian, you name it. But now they go under one umbrella name called American, which encompasses a melting pot of nationalities that have now what? They're now ex-patriots, expats of Europe. Who now go under a nationality called American, but that ain't who you are. As I start to close out. The United Nations Charter has set up the instructions in the preamble. And we just simply understand the instructions say, if you want your freedom, which sets up your human rights for men and women that are Moroccans. Then you must understand, you gotta establish the conditions. And you must understand the obligations of what? Treaties and international law. And through the international law, it will promote social progress and standards of life. With what? Your own legislation. We must enact our own legislation for Moroccans. Not Americans. I end with that.